of Eldridge Iowa on Monday, November 4th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Adrian, would you like to tell the government kids?
Hello? Guys, you here for government, just want to let you know you guys came early. Our regular council meeting starts at 7:00 PM. Therefore, I don't know if you're aware, but you have to stay for both meetings tonight in order for me to get credit. Okay, just want to let you know. The last meeting could drive on to probably 10:00 or 10:30 tonight. So I just want to make sure you guys are prepared. Okay, if you will.
This is roll call.
Blackwell?
Here.
Brusley?
Here.
Campbell?
Present.
Collins?
Present.
Gooding?
Here.
Hamilton?
Present.
Yossi? Padavich?
Present.
Peterson?
Present.
Brian Doctor, he'll be absent tonight. Looking for approval of the agenda.
So, Mayor.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Blackwell, second by Campbell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Number three, consideration to approve the appointment of Mark Gooding to the Utility Board of Trustees for a term expiring on February 28th, 2028. In your packet, you'll see his application. Mark is currently on the Community Center Board. And as you see, I think he's well qualified to be a good candidate to be on the Utility Board.
Let me make the motion to approve Mark.
Second.
Motion by Campbell, second by Collins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it. Number four. Items for discussion, a possible action for a cost sharing budget items and projects. Your benefit, turn to the view.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So I, in the packet, you'll see some information about how the distribution for wages is broken down between departments. And we do have some employees that are paid out of several departments, just depending on what job duties they have and which departments they perform work for. So the two I think that come to mind that need to be addressed and have some discussion on would be the city clerk, who is by resolution and ordinance, the finance officer for the Utility Board and always has been. Currently, the clerk is paid 50% out of sewer and 50% out of finance. So looking at potentially having some contribution from the utility for the financial reporting and budgeting that is done for the utility departments. The other one is for the administration. Currently, administration is paid 70% out of admin and 30% out of sewer. Right now, with the administration duties being done by the city administration, I think some discussion can be had there for contribution towards that salary from the utility departments as well. And then in the future, if there's other administration doing that specifically for the utility, then that would adjust over to pay that person's salary instead of the city administration. So some proposals that could potentially be considered for city clerk with it currently 50% sewer, 50% finance. One proposal could be something along the lines of 50% finance, 20% sewer, and then 15% out of electric and water. Similar proposal for administration could be 55% out of administration and then 15% out of sewer, electric, and water. Thoughts, questions?
How much of your time in Nevada is spent on utility work, would you say?
Currently, I'd say it's more city, just because there's more employees directly under the city. But aside from that fact and just breaking up the ratio of employees, I would think we are getting pretty close to 50-50, probably 60-40. Somewhere along those lines, just because the administration piece right now is so heavy with all of the compliance reporting agendas in the minutes and all of the administrative duties other than utility billing.
Now, I know we have some discussion, I think tomorrow, with possibly advancing Sadie into the management or management training on this. How much of your duties would be relieved in promoting Sadie over to do, to offtake some of this work?
So the goal with that plan would be to transition all of the administrative work that I'm doing for the utility over to her in that role as an administrative management level role for the utility. What I proposed for that was about a six-month training and at least see where we're at at that point. I do think she's definitely capable of being at that point where she can be on her own in that management level at the six months, if we are able to stick to that plan. But she would then take over all of that administrative work for the utility and keep that all kind of separate, so that you would have a utility administrative manager and then a superintendent in each of the departments, so that you've got your kind of expert level management in the field, proceeding operations portion. But then you've got someone who's got that knowledge and experience and background in both electric and water, as far as the compliance reporting, the budgeting, billing, and all of the regulations and laws that go along with how you can bill and the different parts and pieces of the administration for both of those departments. So it essentially transitioned what I'm currently doing over to another kind of management level role, which would leave some time for someone in one of the water sewer department, or, sorry, electric departments to learn some of that administrative work if they have any interest in eventually going into administration role. There will be someone who's dedicated to be able to adequately train them that isn't split between two demanding and very kind of full-time administrative tasks. The city and the utility both have a similar workload, I would say, for the administration portion of it.
Sure, so the workload could actually shift, you know, obviously in the future. But obviously, she'll still, she would still lean, of course, on you and Jeff and so on while training for that.
Yeah, so the plan would be to have her work alongside not only Jeff and I, but all of the department heads, because I think going into that management role in administration, no matter what department you're in, there's a lot of benefit to participating in all of the different departments and learning how they all work together and how they impact each other with different projects and each other's finances. So we would like to get six good months in of having her shift through departments, primarily focusing on utility. Also, an education aspect of it, where she attends webinars and different workshops and gets some education that way. And then also to be some project leads on some of the pending projects or upcoming projects that we have right now that currently Jeff or I are leading or some of the other department heads, and have her take the lead on some of that to kind of get some of that hands-on independent management experience in different departments.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question, please? What's the purpose of the microphones up there?
So you can hear?
Well, it's troublesome, because it's a big room and you get noise all over here. And it's up there, they're available, why not use them, please? I know the house is a little loud, I called it earlier.
I think Marty's asking to please use the microphone.
What say Jeff?
I said, I think Marty's asking to please use the microphones. I don't have one.
Thank you.
Tell me if I'm.
Okay, so now, the current proposal then for the.
There we go. Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome. Thank you. Current proposal then for the electric would be 15% and then the water 15%, correct?
That, yeah, that's just one proposal that I threw out there. It really could be broken down several different ways, but that's just kind of an even among the three enterprise funds that get managed and have that compliance and financial reporting to go along with them.
And this would be up for evaluation again in Sadie years' time?
Yeah, really anytime, but yeah, we would definitely, we would evaluate it every year during the budget cycle to make sure that that's aligned appropriately. But it could be brought forward anytime if there was a need to evaluate it and make sure that those contributions are still reflecting the duties that each individual is doing for each department. Like the mechanic is currently 50% out of city, because he works for city sewer PD, but then 25% out of electric and water, because he works on all of those vehicles as well.
And then as far as the impact of the overall budget for electric and water, is this something that, I know, I know we've got some discussion on budget items, you know, coming up, but just want to make sure we're accounting for that extra cost that we didn't have in here before, especially with some other bills that are coming through here as well.
Yeah, so currently for the water and electric, where you're budgeted for fiscal year '25 to where you're currently at, electric, you're up about $140,000, little over. In water, it's about $43,000 that you're over in those budgets, because there was previously contribution going towards other wages that were doing these tasks.
Okay, understood. I have nothing else on that.
So what is, what is the rest of the board thing? What are you about to say, by the sharing?
I think, I mean personally, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure it's very well defined. And like when we might brought up the evaluation periods, like when we'd want to evaluate and just closer breakdown of how we're evaluating this. Just in my experience too, you maybe have, I mean, you take that with good or bad and we have to make that decision. We're going to do the maintenance 25%. You said it's, you may not have that at all, which is something you just have to go forward with, I think, in my opinion. That you may use it 60% this year and you may only use it 5% the following year. So I think that's something we probably need to discuss.
Anybody else?
All right, is that? No? Or is it some working? Okay.
Oh, it's working.
It did work.
It's working. Did it work now? Okay. So I know that we had talked about this a little bit before. And I think if we can just maybe have a little bit more information on our budgets, maybe in the near future to go over and stuff, because I know that we, this current board is all so new that I feel like really understanding how our budget was made, because we're working off of a budget that was made for us by another board. And that was also put together by a completely different administration, you know, person. And there are some things that we have found that I think we're lacking in, and I just want to make sure that we're budgeted appropriately. And, but definitely, you know, you guys deserve, you know, to be paid through the appropriate channels. And the numbers look good. I just want to see what that looks like in real time.
And you can email that later too. Just looking for clarification on what information you'd be looking for from the budget that I can provide, just so I can make sure I'm putting the right information together for you.
Probably just mainly like, I know that we have the salaries and stuff, but like looking at like what everybody's breakdown and what their job description with the salary maybe.
Jeff or Mark, do you have any input on this?
Not at the moment.
Not at the moment.
Okay.
So Rachel, you know, you're bringing up that basically the time study. And every year, I think, could be different, when you have somebody that's doing dual jobs. Let's take Schnuckeloff as an example. There might be one year where he has an extensive amount of extra time on working on city vehicles versus utility, or the next year could be the opposite, flip-flopped. That's where we've talked in the past, for people that have those dual positions, we kind of talked about it within the administration and the office too. It's not like you're going to be able to break down every single minute and every hour, but if you can do some sort of time studies as you're doing it throughout the week, that's going to help us. And I think, you know, we've had that discussion. We don't want to micromanage every minute that they're working, but they have a general idea at the end of the day, how much time they spend on utility versus city. And if we can all break that down, I think that's going to get us to where we need to be. And it's going to change, it's going to be fluid, but it's going to give us a general idea.
Well, I think the focus too is if we come to an arrangement with Sadie tomorrow in some discussions with the management training on some of these duties and relieving some of these duties from Nevada. I mean, she's definitely instrumental and is an important person, you know, that has the information that we need. But at some point, I would expect maybe Sadie would, you know, start as she eases into that role, would relieve some of these duties. So then that's why I was saying, we may need to address it and consider changes in the future. If we look at it a year from now, what have you.
That's what I like the most too, is because nothing's locked in stone here. So we can relook at it in six months, you know, in nine months, even a year, and say, okay, it made sense back in November, but now after she came on board and now she's working with us, now things are changing, we can change it at that time. There's nothing that says we have to wait a year or two years. You know, it's that we'll work together and make it right for the citizens.
Yep, sounds good.
Any other conversation on this? Okay. Sub number two, item number four, legal services, Nevada.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the other kind of bigger cost that both boards had talked about throughout the last six months for legal services that were provided by the city attorney or both the city and the utility board that were directly related to some of the the work that was done on behalf of the utility board to get through those times. So I provided a breakdown to everybody, estimated what of the invoices from PAPUS Wright was related to utility. So there's a total at the bottom for each month for what the total invoice from PAPUS was. And then there's an estimate to what, in the lines up with Dickinson invoice totals, of what was related off of those invoices to utility. And so that would be the amount, the $68,143, that would be looking at some sort of split or cost sharing between the utility and the city, because those are the items that both agencies use the legal services for. Is there any question about how this is broke down at all?
Does that include our, in our utility portion, what we just acquired their services for?
This is through September, so I believe there's, there will be more on that for October. But I did talk to the city attorney and moving forward for those specific utility-related items, there will be separate billing, so that we don't have to break down. It will just be sent to city and utility separately. Okay, thank you.
And for the PAPUS Wright portion, does this include both the cost for the city to defend against that lawsuit that was filed by the previous board? And also the amount of time that they've spent with the utility board currently trying to put behind us the requests that were made by the previous board?
So the estimated items for, from PAPUS Wright for the utility are related to any utility-related items throughout that period. So it would include any itemization. We can ask for a further breakdown if there's something specific that the boards want to see from those invoices, but we just got the invoices actually from PAPUS. They were in the process of changing their billing agency, so they got, some of their bills were backed up. So we just received the last three months. And so this is our first opportunity to break them out going forward between city and utility. But we do have itemized invoices that can be shared with both boards as well. This is just going through and taking an estimate off of all of those itemized items, which ones were directly related to utility in general. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
So there's an opportunity, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm looking at this differently. There's an opportunity for us to break down what we did as a city to defend ourselves with what was going on. And then there's also what that utility board at that particular time, their legal fees, what they thought was appropriate when they were going through the right. So there's, so there's, there's two sections of this here, these totals, correct?
Yeah, so there's two different legal firms. Dickinson was the representation for the utility during that time. And PAPUS, the city attorney's firm, was representing the city. But throughout that, probably maybe as early as late March, the city attorney was working, the city and utility were communicating and kind of working together to get these issues resolved and get them behind us. So there would be some, I think, that are directly related to that defense litigation. But some of them will require, I think, some further breakdown, custody and analysis on what qualified as items that were addressed for both the city and the utility that were working together at that point and not just strictly motions for defense against that litigation.
Can these amounts to Dickinson, both general and trustee removal, this reflects the last amount that we agreed upon as a board for settlement, or that's still forthcoming?
So the amounts reflected on here are the amounts that were charged on the invoices from Dickinson. It does not reflect the decision by the utility board recently on how they were going to move forward with those invoices. Those are the original invoice amounts from Dickinson for those months. So I believe that there was an initial invoice paid to Dickinson in the amount of $3,767. And I believe there was a decision to proceed with around $7,455.
Okay, so these numbers, it could be, the final bill with Dickinson could be less than what we're seeing here.
Correct. If everything moves forward the way the utility board has voted to proceed, it would be about $11,220 for Dickinson as a grand total.
Okay, thank you.
And that, that lower line there where it says total invoices, that's total amount billed to both the city and utility. So if you subtract that last line up above from that total, that shows the difference between the utility billing and what the city was, correct?
Yes, so the total invoices from PAPUS were, throughout that time period, were $103,707. So anything above the $68,143 were city-related matters that aren't related to utility that the city would pay entirely, the full portion of that $35,000. And then the 68 would be the estimated amount that would be looking at some sort of split or contribution from both the city and the utility.
Just to clarify, just to clarify, Nevada. February, March, April, May, probably June, most of that was probably spent trying to defend ourselves, is that correct?
Yes, it looks like a good portion of that total invoice for February, March, April, and May was spent on utility-related matters, that being the defense and the working through the issues and all of the pending items that went along with that. Some of them still ongoing, so there will still be some bills. But again, those will be broke out as much as possible. Then it looks like at about June, it starts to drop off. It was about half of the June invoice and then it starts to decline from there.
First of all, I think it's great that we're all here. The last time we got together as a group, it was rather contentious and things didn't go as well. And it was a kickoff to about three or four month time period that none of us wanted to be part of, and none of you were a part of it, so that, I thank you for stepping up and doing what you're doing. But what I've heard a lot over the last seven or eight months is how much money the city has spent to defend themselves and we ended up really doing nothing wrong. And so that's the unfortunate thing, that I think we have to come to some kind of agreement. We wouldn't have spent near that kind of money, that money could have been spent elsewhere. And I also think that there are some good people on the former utility board that got caught up in this as well, because of the actions of a couple people. But I think that the utility board needs to at least look at this number and come up with what you think would be fair to give us, to reimburse us for what we had to go through. And the other thing is, this number does not include all the time that Nevada and Jeff had to spend for those four or five months, doing the investigation. And there were weeks, you guys are putting in long hours. And I remember having conversations that some weeks, that's all you spent your time on, was utility board stuff and trying to defend the city. And so that's another expense we wouldn't have had to incur if things hadn't gone the other way. But I need it's important for us to come to some kind of sharing agreement on this.
I definitely share the sentiments, it's unfortunate, I mean, it's a large amount of money. And I believe at the beginning of, and this is just from what I gathered through the newspaper before I was a part of the board, I think the law firm that was retained, perhaps, I don't know, I didn't think there was a genuine idea that we were going to end up with this much money being spent and for what, nothing. So it's, yeah, it's tough. It's, and that's why we, you know, I know in our, in our meetings the last couple months, you know, closed sessions, you know, we've labored over going through these. I know all of us, you know, have spent a lot of time going through the legal files and trying to decide, okay, is this legitimate? Was this voted upon? Was this approved? And what was not approved? And so again, that's why, you know, we didn't go along with these numbers that Dickinson presented, just based upon the information they provided us. It didn't align with everything that the former board members had voted for. So, but what I am for is getting this behind us. And, you know, I know there's, I know there's a number we could probably all agree to on this.
Dan, Brian, you have anything to add?
I'm just glad that we're all here tonight and that we all can communicate and that we're all here for the citizens of Eldridge. It's just, I got goosebumps, because you know what? We're doing the right thing for the right reasons. So thank you, everyone.
Adrian, do you have anything to add?
Nothing, thank you.
Utility board, do you have anything else to add? All right, well, at this point there, that gives us something to absorb and look at. And we may have to bring this back around for another combination meeting, if that sounds good, everybody.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item letter B, new public facility project and consideration of a proposal from I. of a proposal from ISG Engineering for facility needs on a report in amount of $34,000. Nevada, Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. In the packet for tonight's meeting, there's a proposal from ISG. They have been working with both the city and the utility through 2023, and we've had contact with them in 2024 as well. Public facilities have been a project that's been at least on the minds of the utility and the city council for many, many years, and we're hoping to get that project planned and get a hook that forward. So the city received ARPA funds, just over 1 million, and some of that went to some new equipment for the police department. The remaining balance was about $858,000. Recently, the city signed an agreement to purchase some land for $803,400. So most of that ARPA money was spent on purchasing that parcel, so that we can use that land for future expansion for public works and utility facilities, and also as part of a project plan for city hall and police department. With that money being spent from ARPA to purchase the land, we can start to move forward with what a large-scale overview might look like for a project plan to actually get something moving for public facilities and what that might look like. So ISG has updated this proposal, they originally had given to us in 2023, and that would include working with all of the department heads to determine what the facility needs would be for each of them, looking at the sites that we have in mind for those different expansion projects, and helping us with a large and broad-scale cost for those projects, and a timeline, and some possible funding sources to help us define this project and what it might look like, and a phased approach that we would be able to take to that. So the proposal would be to cover that scope of work for both the utility and city departments to be able to look at those future expansion needs.
This would be cost share between the utility and the city?
That's the proposal, yeah.
And this is in addition to the, the current study that ISG is performing for the utility with the water department, especially, I know they're, they're looking at upgrades and deficiencies that we need to address?
Yes, this would be separate. So the current report that they're doing is for the distribution and treatment center and future needs to serve the customers and development for, through the treatment and distribution of the water system. This would be strictly related to actual construction and planning of the public facility, and the expansion of the public facilities, relocating the public works and utility out to a new site, and determining what that public facility would need to look like, and how long that might take, and what different funding sources could be accumulated for that project. So they're, they're two separate. Although, the information from the PER would be very helpful as part of this proposal for them in determining those facility needs and what else that property might need to have on it as we look to grow in the future. So they'll definitely work hand in hand.
Okay, thank you.
I must admit, I do enjoy seeing this. I believe it's money well spent. As a community here, we need to be more proactive instead of reactive, and the purpose of this is to look at our future growth, what do we need from a public works standpoint, from the utility board, from city hall staff, and from our local police department, to sure the needs of being met, that we're doing so accordingly to the possibility of the future growth within Eldridge and the surrounding areas, and also that we be physical responsible with our funding for the taxpayers. I'm, I'm in favor of it moving forward. Again, and possibly frees up that corner. Right now, we're the utilities and public works is, we're either retail or commercial. As our city minister straighter said, there is a need still for a city hall police station. So it brings back to, to the forefront what we want, what we need, what the sentences of elders has asked for before. This has been going on a while for individuals who have been living here, who's been part of city government for past and current, of the need for police station and city hall. Unfortunately, at that particular time, I, I don't hear anybody here that states that no, we don't need a city hall or a police station. So folks just didn't agree how it was going to be funded. So unfortunately, it didn't pass at that last time. We're doing well, we're communicating, I think we're communicating thoroughly of the needs and the growth all the way around, and the sentences trust us. I trust you guys moving forward with this, and it's money well spent. Thank you.
So are you looking for a cost share in this tune to that, in terms of utility board at the council, is that your plan?
Yeah, so all, all of the cost sharing comes down to appropriate financial accounting for where this money is going to be spent and on what, and this proposal is going to be spent to determine the needs for the public facilities for, to continue services for both the city and the utility services that are provided. So proper accounting would say that the, the money to fund this proposal would come from all of the departments that are benefiting from the services or being evaluated.
So is it fair to say then the electric department would be directly benefiting from any new, new facility move, whereas the water department, our treatment plant, that would still remain in the same location, same building, right?
So they'll have to determine what the needs of the water department are, and whether a new treatment facility would be needed, and whether that would go on that new parcel, what the utility department needs for electric would be, and then also city hall, which houses all of the billing clerks and takes care of all of the billing and accepting of payments for all of the utility services, and all of the coordination, I guess, of, of the services for all of the departments as well. So at any one of the locations, there's going to be benefit to city and utility, because we're all housed in all of those facilities and perform functions and services out of those facilities together.
As well as a good location for, to replace one of our retired wells.
Oh, I agree. I'm, I'm all for having wells on the south side of Leclerc Street. I mean, and that's why I brought that up, is if currently our wells are on the north side, and you're in close proximity to the existing treatment plant, I, I just, you know, and, and again, if this, if this study includes the possibility of expansion on that, so the, the south side of Leclerc is, is also, has a well or redundancy plan for the water, then I'm, then I'm definitely for that.
Mark, Abby?
I'm in.
Rachel?
Mike.
Dan, Brian?
We're good.
Okay. So are you thinking this would be approximately 50/50 split then, right now, at this point? Nevada?
Yeah, I think it's a fair 50/50 split proposal. It's for, I mean, it's for the entire city operations and the facilities that house all of them, so then it would be like the other equal cost-sharing projects or services that we have at 50/50.
Is the utility board comfortable to move forward with that, or would you like to postpone that until you guys can talk about some more?
I don't have any further concerns, Rachel, Abby, Mark, I have Jeff.
Nevada, how would we vote on that, since it's a combined meeting? We've never voted on something in a combined meeting before.
So there's no roll call votes, it would be just having that motion carry, but I think it'd probably make the most sense to have the, both the presiding officers take that vote for their board.
Okay. Yep, that makes, that makes sense.
Do I hear a motion to approve 50% of the $34,000 cost for ISG to, to give us a, well, to propose the facility needs? Motion from Hamilton?
Second.
Second, Pedovich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it?
City Council?
I'm in. Motion on our behalf, Frank.
Okay, go here, second. Motion by Campbell, second by Collins. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Thank you. Onto item 4C, council and board member annual training with the city attorney. Nevada?
So the city attorney's firm offers one free annual training each year, and with new board members from the utility board, and we have new council members as well, that, just trying to get some input or feedback on what kind of training you would like to see. One idea would be a joint training, so that we can cover all of the new members in that, that free training, and just go over some of the basics for the board and council roles as, related to staff roles, and just that overall makeup and responsibility and authorities of the boards. There's, there's that option, there's endless options, if there's certain provisions or parts of the law that you want to specifically be trained on, we can do that as well, and do separately, but just looking for some feedback as we're coming up at the end of our first year with this attorney firm, and want to take advantage of that free training.
So, so this is near and dear to me, because if I didn't have the training I did, I'm not sure what would have happened in the beginning of this year with everything we were going through. But I think having repetitive training, I think, is important. I think, number one, the municipal leadership training academy that myself and Scott took when we first got elected, I think is hugely important, but I also think having that repetitiveness, so if we did that same training through an attorney, through some online training that comes out, I think that I would have never, ever understood the importance of legalities, voting, emailing, anything that goes along with our responsibilities, it is so easy to break the law. And that's what, why some other people have been a predicament, is because they didn't know what was exactly legally expected of them. So I think that training personally should be mandatory, and we've talked about this in the past, I think any new member coming on should, should have to take that municipal leadership training class. But then annual training, I think, is, is extremely important as well, because not everything is going to stick, but the more you get it, the more you're going to remember it. And part of that municipal leadership academy helps you identify what your roles are and your positions, which, coming in here, you guys probably didn't know exactly what was expected of you, I certainly didn't, but the, the training helps you kind of better understand statewide what they define as your role for that position. I wouldn't necessarily say this is necessary for all board members, but certainly for utility and city council, I think that, I think it should be mandatory.
I would also agree with Ryan. Frank went the same way when I was saying that I did, and it was invaluable. I went in thinking I do move set after covering the council for the paper for so long, but you learn a lot of things that I didn't know, and I think it should be mandatory as well.
I think all of us would agree as well. You know, Ryan, he's given us a couple of these training things to look into too, so we would definitely open that, I think, speaking on behalf of the rest of the board members. Thank you.
More in favor of more training? Is this something that has to be done by the end of the year to, to qualify for what we have coming?
I, I haven't had that indication from Allison, I don't think we have to have it done by December. I think we want to spread out those trainings, all the other meetings that you guys have to go to, we want to probably try and get one in within the next few months, and then look at what a good training might be for that next year, and kind of thinking ahead from what, whatever is learned in this training and what's covered, what might be a good follow-up, or what other questions are left unanswered from that training, and start looking ahead to, to schedule that, that second annual training, I guess.
So that's open to all of us on the board, right?
Yes.
Because it just says board member, not members, so I, that's just questioning.
Nope, that's just my type, though, it's open to all of you. Yep, and I, I agree with Brian and Scott, with the, the city council and the utility board being the most, is heavily authorized governing bodies, I think that training is especially important for those roles, and would be beneficial for everybody to do maybe that initial training, and then kind of figure out from there what, what questions that you have that may be more in address in that, that first training, and see what those options would be for additional training next year.
Yeah, it's similar to professional development, so within our occupations, you know, you want to learn, you want to grow, in whatever field you're in, as elected officials as well, I believe it's important that we, we continue to grow, no matter how long we have served on council or a board, just to make sure that you're on top of things. It's, it's important. I also believe it's important that all the records is covered, so with the, but I believe that's been done in the past, so that everybody understands, you know, that from a legality standpoint, which is important too. And if there's any cost savings to it, if we have more individuals, if it does save the city money, then I would encourage anybody, everybody to partake in that as well.
So would it be, we'd like to get one of these in before the year ends yet?
Yeah, we could certainly plan something still for this year, if we know, and what days or times would work, or what, what that.
Or like what days they have available, or how we want that, and we can go from there?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
How long are we talking?
I don't know if there's a limit on how long. I would say, my guess would be that it's at least two hours, but that's strictly just a guess, but I can find out from Allison and let you know how long that kind of training typically lasts, and then give some options on, we can look at weekends, weeknights, and during the week, and give out a couple of options, and just see what, what seems to work best for the whole group.
I think so. I think even if there were some like later afternoon, early afternoons, too, that may be an option for some of us during the week too, if we want to throw one of those in.
Will do.
Any other comments on annual training with the city attorney? All right, we'll have Nevada look at some dates and times and get back to us. We'll move on to letter 4D, contract negotiations with the Eldridge Iowa Employee Association. Nevada, can I call you for that?
Thank you, Mayor. This one's mostly just informative, but the contract negotiations, we've received that official request to open up the contract negotiations with the Eldridge Iowa Employee Association, so that covers our municipal and utility employees together. I believe our, our initial discussion to kind of set the timeline and representation on both sides is set for November 14th at 9:00 a.m. It'll be Jeff and myself and Mayor, and then we would like to have a representative from the utility board as well, if there's someone available. And then as we work through those negotiations, we will follow up with council personnel committee and with other, with the utility board members as well, so that once we have a tentative agreement on a contract, we can bring that back, make sure we've got the approval of personnel committee, and then get those in front of the boards for a final approval, and that's all, when we get to that point.
And is there a proposed time on November 14th? Is there a proposed time on November fourteenth?
Yeah, that one is at nine AM, and it's just our introductory meeting to set the kind of the timeline and the representation on both sides. So I would anticipate that one would probably be an hour or less than as we get into contract negotiations, just depending on how many different proposal items are brought forward. Some of them can go longer, closer to maybe two hours, but try not to take them too far past that unless we know we're fairly close to an agreement, then we might stretch it out for the afternoon just to finish it up.
I'll take a look at my calendar and see, I may be able to attend.
Same, I'll need to check mine.
Any other questions for Nevada on the employee association bargaining? Well, with that, we'll adjourn the first meeting for the city council and the utility board.
Can we make an announcement? The students who came at six o'clock, you just received word, it's your lucky night. You can leave after this, so please come, bring your papers up, the sign, you guys left out.
Meeting adjourned.